All members of the committee are present. First order of business is approval in minutes of August 1st.
I move approval.
Removed and seconded for approval, so any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Then we have item two on the agenda, which is discussion regarding the sale of CDA-owned property at 6771 West National and lease of adjacent parcel located at 67 Star Star West Mitchell to Baum Revision for historic rehabilitation and adaptive reuse. And we may go into executive session later on in the meeting. At this time, I'll turn over to our leader of economic development, Patrick.
Thank you, Alderman Lysing, and members of the council. Tonight, we have two questions before you. One, it's an introduction of the development agreement with Baum Revision for 6771 West National. And then the other question is the direction of how to move forward, or if you're interested in knowing more about the project and facilitating it to go forward, or, you know, other actions that you would like to see economic development pursue. You might recall, this is an historic property. It's actually designated to be eligible as historic as a landmark to the National Park Service. It's an old part of Kearney Trecker Corporation, actually dates back to around 1918, it was used as a foundry. The proposed project is a $16 million historic renovation of the property. It's around 40,000 square feet. That would be divided into two uses, 20,000 square feet as an event venue and 21,000 square feet and as offices and storage for the prospect that is in the event planning industry. David Baum is here tonight, Scott Goldman and Bryant, as this is the Baum Revision team. And they will present a little bit about the project following our introduction here this evening. You might recall a little history in the project. This goes back to some members who are on the council today. We bought this property in relationship to the former Briggs and Stratton. The foundry that was at the site, it was Motor Castings at the time, not Motor Castings.
Federal Ballroom?
Yeah, Motor Castings.
No, it was Malleable Iron.
No, it was called something else.
Milwaukee Duckling, right?
Milwaukee Duckling. But it had another name, Association of Motion Industries or something like that, that was the lead company that owned the site. And then they closed the site and they went to demolition. And we bought it through that process, thinking this would be a great opportunity for redevelopment. And through that process, we toured the 6771 property, and it was wrapped with this white steel panel. And we got inside and all of a sudden, all this cool steel and open space and mezzanine levels, and we thought, this could be reused. And it's taken some time. We've gone through COVID, we've gone through Baum Revision, we'll call that one. And then we went through another developer to realize it'd be really hard to capitalize to do a $16 million project, and they were a smaller firm, and they thought they just couldn't do that. And now we have Baum Revision 2, which is post-COVID, and now at the stage of ready to go forward. We have worked with the developer, they've secured the letter of eligibility from the National Park Service, they received a letter, I guess it's a commitment letter, a letter of new market tax credits from FIRE. They are also using PACE financing, et cetera, with the goal of starting construction later in December if the development agreement moves forward, and opening in May of 2025. Now, this is a two-year project to renovate this property. It's a complete redo of the inside. And when I say redo, it's not like taking away all the patina, but to make it look like a nice destination place that people want to hold events, fairs, markets, art shows, et cetera, within the facility. Major deal points here is that the property would be sold for a dollar. We did pay around $600,000 for this site back when we acquired it. And then, but that also included the parking lot that's adjacent to this site as well. Our goal here is to also facilitate the renovation, but by doing that, there's a space that's adjacent, it's called 67 Star Star West Mitchell, adding 130 stall parking lot. Now, that's an estimate of parking stalls. We still have to design it, look at stormwater retention and all those types of things, so it fits well within the context of the neighborhood. Then we have a $200,000 obligation in the development agreement. The lateral is failed, is my understanding. They have to trench utilities into the site or around the property. And when you do that, you disturb dirt. And we have it in the development agreement that we would pay the incremental cost to deal with any environmental soils up to 200,000. So that's where the 200,000 is stated. The deal also would be that Baum Revision would lease the parking lot for a dollar in exchange for maintaining it, lighting it, plowing, plowing it, et cetera. The proposed tenant might have some service vehicles, they would also need to use some of the parking, and it'd be dedicated for some of those vehicles as well, as they provide services across the region. The idea here with the current lease that's proposed of the 21,000 square feet in here is around 10 years, and that our lease for the parking lot would coincide with whatever terms there. Now, through the course of this, as we see, OPE has been very successful. And when we did the development agreement with OPE, this parking in this back area, I'm just kind of highlighting the back part of their building, was labeled in the development agreement as shared parking. The idea was that this would become a district. People would go to a wedding, go have a beer and walk into, or attend an event in 6771. The idea is creating a shared parking field. We'll talk about that a little bit more in close session. This is another thing I wanted to point out. Often, we, you know, we look at OPE and they're parking 80 to 90 vehicles behind their building. This is going to be a venue that would bring 50,000-plus visitors to the site through the course of the year, probably a lot more than that, if you factor in weddings and art shows and different events. But this is a survey of parking in the general area, whether you factor in the senior center parking lot, all within a short walking distance of the facility. Now, some of it is privately owned, some of it is on the street, as in right-of-way. There are underutilized areas currently in this area. There are some signs, I believe, that are legacy signs left over from when there was a manufacturing plant along Mitchell that says no parking. So we need to review those, we just haven't done that yet. So there could be additional street parking within this area as well. But we just wanted to point out, 294 off-street parkings within a two-minute walk. I just recently went downtown for my daughter's birthday party celebration, and we parked four blocks away in a parking structure and had to pay. I mean, it's four blocks. This is within two blocks of the particular site. So TIF 14 was created when we acquired all the land of the former foundry that was in this area. Metal Technologies, see, they had another name, and I couldn't remember it off the top of my head. And the idea here was that we want a rehab of this site, facilitate a development here. And these are the current estimated values on these sites. It's around 19 million, 20 million or so for the Behavioral Health Hospital. OPE is around 1.4 million today. The TIF is actually performing quite well. The idea here is that if we go forward, just with the current plan with development for the 1.2 for parking and the environmental costs, the TIF would probably go, be extended to 2029. If you do nothing, and decide, let's just leave the building, we don't want to go forward, we'll figure this out, now, that's not a real option, but I just, with the current amount of debt, it'd probably take to 2027 to close that TIF. If you want the building raised, if you decide that's the direction, then this TIF would be extended because we would have to work to facilitate the demolition, which is estimated around 500,000. We would have to probably incentivize some development on that site, et cetera. If you look at what we've done for the current market family, market rate apartments in our West Alice area, we have provided TIF, et cetera. There are ways, and we can talk a little bit more about that when we go into close session. But the TIF is performing quite well. The proposed use would bring in 24 jobs. You're bringing a headquarters of a business into this space that's currently vacant. It's going to bring activity, it's going to bring 56 part-time positions, and there is opportunity for growth within these particular areas. And I'll let Baum Revision talk a little bit about that growth and use of the property. Again, if this was, and this is just an example, if it was renovated, this is with clear windows. I've been asked, what about these windows? And I know Baum can talk about it further, but there are colored panels in the current You know, that would be great to restore to that, but ultimately, the National Park Service will say, well, we think the period of time should be X. And that's clear windows. And in order to get the historic tax credits, you have to adhere to the standards of interiors, standards that they have, and that's what dictates the, really, the rehab of the property. I think you would talk about it a little bit further in your presentation. But when you look at the event space and how it could be used, it's weddings, it's corporate events, farmer, indoor farmers markets, like a winter market, a Kris Kindle market inside, et cetera, art shows, festivals, music, workshops, music outside. In the plan here, this is the forward layout, they have, you know, prep space for food, they have, you know, there's bride rooms and storage here for the event space and staging and loading areas for their service vehicles, a patio. I know somebody asked, where do the smokers go, you know, outside? They do have plans for a patio that's outside. Well, maybe the patio is a place for a Thursday night jazz concert. There are opportunities for things like that. And they have properties that Baum Revision operates that do have events of that nature. But this kind of gives you a kind of a look of what this property would look like renovated. The impact of the event space, of course, it's tax-based, it's visitors, it builds on the synergy of what we've been trying to achieve along the National Avenue corridor that bring people in, bring trips into our city so that they visit a place to eat, they use a hotel possibly, or go to Beecher Street, et cetera, so that there's multiple things for people to go to. And it's something called stickiness, you know, creating place. And this creates something that will not compete with the vision that we see in other areas that we, like the three-leaf proposal on 85th and National. Maybe there's a Sona 2 in the future, or if there's a proposal in the 7th and Washington area for additional apartments in the future. There's growth in those areas, and this, if we renovate 6771, it wouldn't compete with those other projects while creating something that will bring people here. It also would be a place that would partner with OPE Brewing as, you know, a wedding, you would have a beer beforehand or after. It just kind of works together. And with this type of place, they need florists, they need places to get their hair done, they need places to, you know, people to take pictures, et cetera, caterers. The overall project is $16 million. We had S.B. Freeman review the Performa. There is limited equity in it, but if, based on the level of new market tax credits and historical tax credits and PACE financing, this is pretty common within the industry to use these creative financial tools. On a property, you know, this is a significant risk. This is a two-year rehab of a large property that's 1918. So there's, you know, significant contingency and things like that, below market actual return. The potential timeline of things that need to happen. CDA, you know, did listen to the development agreement, has taken it up. This is an introduction of the development agreement tonight, with the idea that it can go before council on September 5th. The CDA would then have a public hearing on the sale of the land, if the direction is to go that way, on our September 12th meeting, and we proceed with the sale of land. Here's another historic picture of the industrial complex that was in this area. This is the actual building, and you can actually see the railroad spur here that came actually into the building. And this is the way it looks today. It's a very unique space. At this point, I'll turn over to Baum Revision to answer any questions and present their portfolio and project.
Thank you. Get out of the way for you guys. Well, that was a great presentation that Patrick covered. I think it goes without saying, you've been working with the City of West Alice for a long time, and you guys are really well-served by Patrick and Sean and the rest of the team. And we've worked at a lot of cities, and they've been wonderful to work with, really collaborative and proactive, and just want to gullups that. But we're very excited for the opportunity to do this. Obviously, we recognize this is a public-private partnership, and we've been working on it for a long time. This is what we do. We redevelop historic buildings across the country, done about 100 projects in 11 different states. And we take buildings like this that need a very particular vision and a use, and we activate them. And the way that we decide on how we activate them is we really take views from the community and listen and figure out what the need is, what the use is, and what the right demand is that fits with the structure. And so we first got involved in this building, and then unfortunately, COVID hit, and, you know, it was unfinancable at that time. And then we got re-involved a couple of years later, and we spent, I don't know, it was a six-month-plus process working with the National Park Service. So that was one major contributor to the timeline here that I think is important to highlight, to address the windows. So the way National Park Service works for historic tax credits is they administer the program for the IRS, which creates these credits, which we then monetize by selling them to a bank. Then we use that as capital to subsidize the redevelopment costs that are extraordinary for these buildings. And so the National Park Service has a say on every single detail of the building, as Patrick highlighted. And the windows in particular were sort of a binary event, because if they had to be maintained in their current form, those windows have no insulation, you can't really have a tenant occupy them, the mechanicals wouldn't work, it's just not feasible. And so for a period of time, they debated between, you know, reusing existing windows in some form of replacement. We ultimately succeeded in going to replacement. There's a lot of back and forth on that, so that took quite a bit of time. But our particular vision, as Brian and David will detail, with the tenant is very similar to a bunch of other projects we've done, which is to activate the project through an event space with a tenant who's in the business of providing services to events. So a portion of the building would be used for their day-to-day business, which is to do that, and then a portion of the building would be used for events. And we do this, you guys might most be familiar with Garber Female, I think, years ago, a group from West Alice when visited the project. And that's a really good example, right? That project is anchored by an event space, that's a large central space, and then have some ancillary tenants around it. And then within that, we do weddings, corporate events, we do the farmer's market inside there in the winter, we produce concerts, all sorts of different things. And really, our job isn't necessarily to dictate what the events are specifically, it's to build beautiful space, it's to support the creative arms of the community, to make sure they're aware of the space, and then work with them to activate it. And that's really our vision here, and I think that vision meets well with, you know, what the objectives are of the CDA with this project in particular, which is to restore the building, to create velocity for the community, to have a project that's enduring and stable, and that's what we've got planned. Turn over to you to kind of take.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to slip ahead a couple more. Yeah, I mean, Scott, go over this. Is it Patrick? You know, the process really, it's a two-year build, but it's been a multi-year process. I mean, just to get to this point, Scott detailed the historic review, working to define the tenant, the uses, get through a budgeting process with general contractors to make sure, you know, this will all work. It's easily, you know, we're going to be four or five years into this process. So it's not a small endeavor, but this is a special building that requires, you know, special attention for the next slide. So I know there has been some questions about kind of like the optics of what the building will actually function as. It's actually about closer to 48,000 square feet of total space, programmable, might be a little bit smaller, but about a third of it, about 18,000 square feet, will be that event space. And that's really that atrium space, that wonderful, hopefully many of you have now been in the building, that voluminous, three-story space, windows. And our goal is to really maintain that feel of the space. You know, it's got the old steel, it's got the masonry, it's got the glazing. We want to gently rehab those aspects of it, but ultimately keep that very open, a very open space so that people can do all sorts of different activities in there. We've mentioned a number of typical events that would happen in a space like that, but an event venue of this size just doesn't really exist in the market, so it creates a lot of those options for things that we can't even imagine. People come to us with all sorts of ideas, and a space like this will be four seasons and be able to accommodate a lot of different activities. And then we have a lot of complimentary spaces, so spaces that either support the event space. So again, Patrick went over some of this, like a prep kitchen for a caterer to come in and serve the food. And then the balance of the space is really utilized for the tenant. So this is an existing business in the region, so they'll be moving their headquarters into the space. They have, I think, 30 to 40 desk areas, kind of programmed for the office. And then the single story, which is on the south side of the building, effectively is their warehouse, so they continue to do their existing event business, but then they'll also have a fabrication shop where they'll be able to create interesting things for the events, both within the building, around the building, and then for their other events. And then we have obviously some mechanical space. So, next slide.
I have a question on that side.
You betcha.
The fabrication.
Yep.
What would be fabricated? Is it metals? Are they welding? Is it noise? Is it smells?
Yeah, it's like, I would say, it ends up being about a 2,000-square-foot area. But yeah, it's like welding, it's woodworking, painting, things that they need to create for events, whether it's a showpiece for a wedding or something that is, you know, art piece for a certain kind of event that they're participating in.
Thank you.
So, these are some renderings, we have three of them. I know Marty was very adamant about having some visuals, these are a little bit outdated, but for the most part, tell the story of, you know, how the space can be utilized for events. You can see that, again, it's a very gentle touch in terms of the event space, you know, trying to maintain exposure to as much steel, as much masonry, as much windows, which really makes that space so unique and so special, and gives it that wow factor that we saw when we first went in. And I've had the opportunity to bring dozens of people through, and everyone just, you know, is floored with the space because it's one of a kind, and will create really an architectural jewel, I think, for the City of West Alice. I think the building itself will be a reason people want to come to the space. Next slide. And there's just another view of kind of, you know, the dramatic use of a space that, you know, just does not really exist. We're, you know, working with an architect who, and ourselves, have just never been in a space quite like this before, and I think will be, you know, very special for the community. And then the next slide takes advantage of, so there is a mezzanine on the second floor, and that's where the office space is for the tenant. So at least it gives you a sense of what the layout will be in the primary public areas of the space. Next slide. So there also has been questions about the tenant. So due to the kind of nature of the situation, you know, we have to keep a certain level of confidentiality. I know some of you have gotten some good information about them, but we're extremely excited about who this is. I think that for the City of West Alice to bring this level of talent to the community and what they do and how they activate spaces and think about community, I think is going to be something that you all will be very proud of, and they'll fit within the goals of what the CDA and the community have laid out for this particular project. So they're a very experienced operator, this is not someone who's just starting from the ground up. These guys have 20 years of experience plus with their existing business, but probably dozens and dozens of years amongst their 50-plus staff members who are all in this industry. And most importantly, they're just a very creative group of people. So, you know, again, we can sit up here and say a few things about what we think the space will be used for, things that we know the space will be used for. But a space of this nature with this optionality, this flexibility, presents all sorts of opportunities, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But this type of organization is the kind that we like partnering with because of their way to see opportunities for these types of uses. So I think the rest of it, we've kind of covered, at least Patrick covered as well too. Next slide. So again, just to give you a rundown of the types of events, I break them into four different categories, but at the end of the day, we expect there to be somewhere between 50,000 and 100,000 visitors annually. I tend to think that's conservative, but it will be, it'll be something that builds over time, as we've seen with all of our venues. But basically, there are four types of categories. So the public events, which, you know, get out of the public markets, the festivals, things that invite in large numbers of people at a given time over a day, or perhaps a weekend, or perhaps even longer. We'll have private events, those tend to be, you know, smaller on average for the most part, serving a variety of community needs. We also see a lot of nonprofit organizations utilizing these types of spaces. So that can be for fundraisers or galas. I know this area is flush with those types of organizations, so we expect that this will also be a space that will allow them to do bigger events, which will have bigger impact and farther reach for their organizations. And then the other category, which is the fun category, that's where, again, all sorts of things could happen in a space of this size, it just doesn't exist, whether it's, you know, we've talked about pickleball or car shows, various different kind of food and beverage experiences. It's really a limitless number of opportunities when you have a venue of this size and the type of operator that is capable of doing the things that we see happening. Next slide. So, you know, we, as Scott mentioned, we have a whole history of these types of projects. I'll just quickly go over the Garber Female. I know some of you have had an opportunity to visit, but I think this is, in many respects, Garber 2.0 in the sense of, we've learned a lot from that specific experience, the type of venue that it is. There's a lot of similarities, and we plan to really kind of exceed and build off of those experiences. So just quickly, the next slide. Here's the project kind of in its beginning state, and afterwards, if you've been in Kearney Trecker, you know it's not nearly as bad as this, but our organization has a history of taking on pretty complicated projects when it comes to the restoration side things. And I think this photo does a great job of showing you, you know, how transformational Garber has been, and as a result, won many awards, which I would have expected, we would do the same with West Alice as well too. So just a few highlights of some of the events that we do in the Garber building. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the farmer's market, we do in the winter for 14 Saturdays, January through April. It's extremely popular activity for the community. We have over 2,000 people in the space. If we had more room, we would certainly be able to do more people. We've got somewhere between 25 and 30 vendors. Many have actually also served the Milwaukee Market too, and I've mentioned this project to a few of them, and they are ecstatic about the opportunity to have a winter market in the Milwaukee region. If you follow the kind of the scene here, they've really been stuck without a venue, and to have a place of this nature is very exciting for them, and they are ready to go when we are. So that's just one example of activating the space for a community benefit. One of the other things that we do is kind of these other kind of markets. One of the more popular ones we do is the Vintage Flea Market, which is now twice a year, over 1,500 people come through the space on any given of the two weekends that we do it. And we have about 40 to 50 small businesses that use this as a platform to basically either start or grow their business, which I think is one of the amazing opportunities the way we operate our spaces, the number of local businesses that get an opportunity to be touched through the operation. And in this case, you know, this is an opportunity for people to get in front of thousands of people and to determine whether or not their business may be ready for a more permanent retail front or something of that nature. Next slide. We do a lot of music as well too. When we did Garber a few years ago, we started, I would never imagine, the popularity of our music, and we've been very fortunate to find a partner who's very connected to the arts and cultural scene. And I would anticipate very similar Kearney and Trecker as well too, where we have opportunities for either the patio space, doing smaller jazz concerts, things of that nature, or we have a large indoor space that could accommodate for concerts as well. We're not a concert venue in the sense that, you know, concert venues are made for that, but we do have a space that can work for more regional local acts that draw, you know, slightly bigger crowds than your average local band. So I imagine that will also be something that will be a big part of the Kearney and Trecker development. Next slide. And then private events, we've talked a little bit about that, the weddings, inseneras, retirement parties. There's just a need for bigger event spaces that is not really being met in the market area, and so we anticipate this venue will be able to support that. Also mentioned, some of the nonprofit events as well too, so we don't need to dwell on that. So, yep, and these are just photos of just different community events that we have, and similarly, we would try to activate the space to create opportunities for public engagement. But again, the type of space this is creates endless opportunities, as well as does the partners. But ultimately, we look to you as well for ideas on how we can utilize the space. Next slide. So I can sit here and talk all day about the success of our projects, but I did want to leave you with at least a few quotes here. I'll give you a second to read. These are older folks in our community, just like all of you here today, who I think would be the first to, you know, say that we've really exceeded expectations in what was a very difficult project, and we're taking a very similar tact, a very similar approach with West Alice, and expect that the results will be equal, if not better, given the opportunity to move forward. So I did want to give those folks an opportunity to at least share their experience with us in the next slide. We also partner with our local tourism bureau, as we would in this area as well, to really activate the space. They have been an amazing partner into showcasing what we've been able to develop, but also bring us new ideas and opportunities. We've had national television shows come to our space and use it as a backdrop for shoots, an amazing opportunity. and use it as a backdrop for shoots. An amazing opportunity recently with the Public Relations Society of America handing their annual conference in Wisconsin and we got to host the media mixer, which brought together 250, 300 travel writers, bloggers, influencers, all under one roof, all into our building. So working with the local visitors bureau is absolutely something that we want to do and plan to do with the activation of the space to create interesting new opportunities. So I'll turn it over to David then to just highlight a few other projects. So Garver is one example, but we have, as Scott mentioned, plenty of examples of these types of projects throughout the Midwest.
Good evening. I'm David Baum. Haven't met a lot of you, so nice to meet you. Scott had mentioned our, we've been working with staff here for a few years and it's been great. Also want to thank all of you for your time and your dedication to what you've done for your city. We've been watching the evolution here. I mean, we love the building, but we've also watched what you have created over the last few years with apartments, with hope, with other things. It's really impressive. We're looking forward to being part of the campus. And but for that, to be candid, we probably wouldn't be here. Like, we couldn't be an island. It doesn't work. So, great job. I'm a bit uncomfortable sitting up and bragging. I don't like to, but I also recognize that you need to know who we are and that this isn't our first time doing it. So you can see by my gray hair or lack thereof, I've been doing this for a long time. We have won dozens of awards for what we do. We're featuring Garver because it's close to you and you can, it's akin to what we're doing here, but we have been doing this for a number of decades. We've won lots of awards. This is a project in Chicago. It was the old Hammond Organ Building. It was 160, is 160,000 square feet. It was in Demo Court. We bought it in foreclosure. There was literally an entire wall that was collapsing. The sprinkler system didn't work. The elevator didn't work. You name it, it was a problem. We now have a waiting list. And all of the tenants in this space are makers, so they create something. So they distill, they brew, they roast, they make set design, they press albums. There's 160,000 square feet of those makers. But we have this large gallery space. You're seeing half of it. And we do large art shows here. We're also doing, if you can flip the slide, we've done car shows. We've done, this is another art show. There's a music event on another one of them. So it runs the gamut. And again, what we're trying to do, Brian used the word "platform", is to create a cool platform with optionality so that you all and we can partner and use our imagination. Because who knows what that space wants to be? What we want it to be is memorable and amazing space. And that's what that building and that area provides. This is another project that we did called Rockwell on the River. Again, in foreclosure. It was a racket. It looked kind of like Garver. This is a wedding venue. It's a venue for all sorts of different things. 17,000 square feet. It's on the river. We have a brewery there. We have a distillery. It's booked up for, you name it. Step and Wolf Theater was there for an event. We have nonprofits. We have car shows. So it's anything that it wants to be. Dance shows, markets. We'll flip one more, please. Okay. Got to see where I am. Minneapolis. This is in Midtown. This is another workshop similar to the one in 4200. This is the before. Pictures. This is after. We're 90% leased. We have, again, an event space. You're going to start to see the DNA. Is we take old buildings that want to be reimagined. We activate them with people that have great ideas. We have lots of optionality so that they have a lot of flexibility, so that they're not pigeonholed into one space, but can do a lot of different things. We do things, yeah, this whole, this whole area is a big...
I was going to go back one more.
The touchscreen.
Didn't realize. Okay. This whole area, I can touch anything, is a whole big patio, similar to what we're talking about. Okay, next slide. This is between the buildings, so you can do an outdoor venue. We like outdoor space. Everyone wants to be able to think they're going to have their wedding outdoors unless the weather doesn't work. But we do that. A lot of art-filled stuff, yoga. I mean, you could see yoga masters. You could see pickleball. I know you all have food trucks on, is it Thursday or Friday? So when it gets cold, let's bring those food trucks in. That whole, that whole train car thing, those tracks that are there, there's a giant door. You could drive food trucks right inside. And we could ventilate it properly. So I mean, you could have your food truck Friday inside and have it during the winter, which I, you know, again, up to the community. I like the idea. Next please. This is the Garver, I'm sorry. This is Green Exchange. This is at the, on the Kennedy Expressway in Diversey. You're driven by the Chicago, in Chicago. Again, another historic landmark. We won the Development of the Year for this in Chicago. We've won awards for most of them, but we won everything for this one. This is a new event space that we built on top of a Sky Garden. This space is booked for two years. We have indoor and outdoor vents. Again, similar, similar stuff. We actually have a full outdoor garden garden, a level below this, on two-thirds of an acre. We grow all of our own food. It's all organic. We'll keep going. Just more of Garver. Oh, if y'all have seen, this is a new one. Have you seen The Bear, the show, The Bear on FX? So that was filmed in this building. Again, you don't know what could happen in there if you have great space. Cool television shows filmed in your space. Yeah. We'll go to the next one. Where am I? Okay. This is Portland. So this is another one. This is similar maker space, creators, event space. We're actually looking to redesign this and to make a much bigger event space because there's been great demand. Keep going, please. This is Boise, Idaho. So if any of you have been to Boise or if you'd been there 15 years ago, no one knew where Boise was. Everyone's like, Iowa? Like, no, it's Idaho. We bought the downtown, it's arguably the best block in Boise, and it was 60% vacant. The other 40% was not something you'd be proud of. Today, we're 100% occupied but for one office space. All the retail is occupied. And in the middle, we had some artists, an artist that was graffitiing on the walls. And I liked it. And I went to meet with him and he was, how do I just say? He was recovering. And we said, to this day, we're partners. Let's do, let's do more of it and invite your friends. And it became Freak Alley. And I went to the mayor and I said, I'm telling you, this could be really cool. Just let us do what we do. And it's on our buildings. It's going to be a tourist destination. And the mayor, he laughed. I mean, he wasn't offensive, but he was like, okay, David, you know, have a good time. I know you like to dream. Check out Freak Alley. If you watch the Boise State football games, they will pan to Freak Alley. If you look on TripAdvisor or any other list, it is the top 10 things to do in Boise. Freak Alley. It is the largest outdoor muralist gallery in that region, in the mountain region. It's all original artists. There have been music videos filmed in this alley. There are commercials that are filmed in this alley. Harley Davidson did an ad. And it's just art. And we have ideas of how that could potentially play. So we're just trying to give you a flavor for the different things that we do and how it activates. And it's limitless. Okay. This is WMA's campus. We have a new event space opening here in a couple of months in a Bo Trust building. And this is our brand-new project that's going to open up next month. This is the Ramova Theater. So this is a 100-year-old movie theater. Sorry if I'm, I don't need to turn my back. 100-year-old movie theater. It has been vacant for almost 30 years. And it used to be the center of the town, of Bridgeport, of the neighborhood in Chicago. It's near where the White Sox play. And it has been vacant and has been sucking the energy out of the community. And we finally bought it a few years ago. Again, historic renovation. We partnered with a music promoter and we're going to open it up next month. We have a laundry list of A-listers that are involved in the project on the entertainment side, but we have a music connection there. And we've been talking to them about the idea that if you're coming to Chicago, you might, you should come to Milwaukee and you should come to Madison and go to Minneapolis. So there's that available too. Again, none of these things are pre-prescribed. Nothing has to happen. It's all optionality. It's all what the community decides and we're looking for a partnership. So if you like food truck Fridays, let's do that. If you want more of the Saturday market in the winter, let's do that. I mean, and it can change. Doesn't, again, it's not a static thing. So we can give you, you may have already done this. We can give you those references. You can call the mayor in Boise. You can check all those things out. You can look online. It's all, you know, discoverable these days. But we've been doing this for a long time. The last thing I wanted to say is this is what we, this is what gets us up in the morning. We get excited about activating spaces. If this was about money, there are easier ways. I mean, these are, these are, you get a bloody lip when you do these projects and we're good for it. But we get excited about this. Scott's wife grew up a few miles from here. He brings his kids up here, I don't know, constantly for their grandparents, for next weekend to go to their, you know. Bryant is from the neighborhood. He brings his daughter here. My daughter works in Wisconsin. I live in Lake County. I mean, this is, for me, like, I want to be proud of what I do. I'm not interested in building, I don't know, whatever it is, an Applebee's. I want to do cool stuff like this. I want to do stuff that moves the needle, that people get excited about, that people are proud of, that people want to take a picture of and say, this is where I was at. And I think that's this project.
Appreciate your time.
I have a few questions. So it made a comment on there about 24 potentially new full-time jobs. There's currently 56 and it said based on 40% expected increase. Is the 24 new jobs, we know it's 24 new jobs, or it's 24 new jobs potentially based on the expected growth?
It's based on what they expect, based on moving into this space. So they don't need to get more business beyond the building. But this building will produce more events, which requires more staff for their company.
And then when you guys say you activate the space, so does your firm, are the ones to book a yoga class, to book this, or is it the event, the tenant that is, who's managing that?
Yeah. So we will be, we will be their partner, but it will be them on a day-to-day basis.
So they did reach out to them to say, I want to take it for this. I want to do this.
Yes.
Or to go out and get it if it's just sitting there.
It's all of the above. So we're, you may get this from us. We're very hands-in-thecookie jar kind of people, but we want to let the people that, our experts are on site, do what they do. So...
So then the tenant would maintain the liquor license or the entertainment license?
Yes. And they will be primarily responsible for producing the events, for booking the events, and we will be involved. And that's how it is at Garver. That's how it is at Rockwell, at all of our spaces. And we are, our operating business is we redevelop real estate. Their business is they produce events. But we get involved with them on a regular basis. I mean, we're not hands-off in any way, but it is their job to produce it.
Part of the reason David showed some of the other things that are going on in the Midwest and our other venues is, and he kind of alluded this to the end, at the end there was, you know, we anticipate that this will be an opportunity for some of the things that we do in any one of those places to be able to move here and to move to the next venue. So creates a little bit of efficiency. So that's why we get involved. We're like, oh, there was a really good artist who came through or a really good promoter or a really good, you know, car show. You know, it's Chicago, Milwaukee, Madison. It's all relatively accessible for these types of folks. So our goal is to be able to help connect those and to let our operators do what they do best.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. What do we anticipate the capacity would be for an event there?
Right now, we're about 1,000 people.
That's, because you know, Deco just opened up. They just had their first wedding. I think their capacity is 650. So you'd be fishing in that above 650 range?
We have the capacity to do that, you know. Yeah, I mean...
Well, I'm just thinking about competition. Because you were saying that you're the only venue in this market, but really, there is, there are others in that market. It's a different kind of venue, I understand that.
Yeah, the space itself allows for a lot more opportunity. It'll lead to the garage door, being able to bring things in and out.
We haven't seen any thousand-person weddings.
Not yet. We just had, because there's nowhere to do it. I mean, there is, but you're not going to put the, you know, Wisconsin Center or whatever. How many of these other projects that we've just highlighted here are single-tenant?
The Ramova is... Ain't the Ramova.
Okay. So all the rest of these have multiple tenants?
Yes.
With like different kinds of businesses, whether it's a coffee shop or a pizza joint or offices? And I'm going to the Garver, I mean, my daughter lives in Madison. We were actually there a week ago Saturday.
Yep.
So I'm probably as familiar with it as anybody else.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe not you guys, but at least the council. So a lot of the comparisons to the Garver, to me, I mean, that's where we started with this. And we got an explanation. We understand the Garver model's not going to work. We're doing, filling that void a little bit with Makers Row, you know, not even a quarter mile away.
Yeah.
But this is really, this really is different. This is going to be an office building with offices for the event business.
Well, yeah, it's multi-tenant, but it's really single-user to your point. And what I would say is, Brian hit it on the head, which is this is Garver 2.0. The biggest problem that we have at Garver is it's multi-tenant and people disturb one another. And so we're always playing referee.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was like that.
And there's problems. And so...
Vans loud.
Yes, exactly. On a regular basis. Because we have competing interests. And so when we looked at this, we originally thought it is Garver and we're going to do multi-tenant. And then as we were, we were operating Garver, we realized that's our biggest problem. Let's solve that problem. And not only are we going to have two tenants, but they're the same tenants. So they don't bother themselves, right? They support themselves. So yes, that's the 2.0.
So this tenant, how much of their business is off-prem, they don't have, they currently don't have a location? 100% of their business currently is...
For decades.
In other venues, in other venues.
Correct.
And so they're going to be doing 50-plus weddings a year here and a bunch of other events or whatever. So that's going to be kind of a new business for them, I understand that.
True.
Are they expecting their off-premise business to grow also? And we're coming down to the number of vehicles they have, the number of employees that they have that might be coming to this location but not actually working at this location.
Well, everyone will work there and then they go...
They go, yeah, but their job of supporting an event in Caledonia or wherever is, they're actually doing the work somewhere else. And again, we hear this discussion about the business and what it is, the event space. Do they supply, I don't know. They're not caterers.
No. They supply the sound, the DJs, the lighting.
Okay. So they don't supply like bartenders or waitresses?
No.
Okay. So it's not like a van full of employees driving up?
No. It's the plumbing, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay. So it's the, yeah, the cool stuff. The stuff that it gets to be, the fabrication, I think, is really interesting.
Yeah.
You know, I hadn't heard that before. I think that's adds a little creativity. And I'm concerned, you know, we're still circling around the parking issue, you know, hopefully we find an answer there or somebody, however the answer gets found. But I had, my concerns were that, you know, I could just see that they're running, that they were supplying this into service industry side of a huge barn wedding somewhere. And here they got vans that they drive, all the bartenders and waitresses and busboys out and all that stuff.
It's not a labor thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Sound engineering, lighting, lighting engineer, the controls, the props, all the things that you built.
Like table and chair rental?
I don't think so.
Yeah. So the, so the storage area is not just going to be a bunch of table and chairs?
No, 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 no.
Or linen?
Just little rounds.
We do have some storage designed for...
For the premises there. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, but they're not...
Yeah, they're not the rentals. They got, they have them. They're real, that's costing them. I, you know, I guess my concern is this, again, we originally pitched with the idea that it was going to be active seven days a week, most of the day. Maybe a coffee shop, maybe a lunch place, you know, that kind of stuff. But now we're down to the, call it 70 employees, the 70-plus employees that'll be working there. That's a good number. Whatever, it's 56 now and you're going to add some on.
Well, we're hoping to activate the space more often than not, if we're doing well.
Beyond just weddings.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that's where like food trucks can come in and kind of fill that role, right? That flexibility, that optionality.
On the food truck thing, do people, are there successful venues where they drive the food trucks in? The food trucks all have their own little generators running, their kitchen and their exhaust fans running. And you, and you do that in that building and still temper the air for that? You could have, I've been to like the, I think it's called the Paper Warehouse or something in Copenhagen. They have a food truck thing. The food trucks are there and they're kind of like plumbed to the venting in the building.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, because your picture, you know, I was in the restaurant business for 40 years. I know what, I know what a kitchen exhaust fan does to the air quality outside.
Right.
I could not, I don't know how, have you done where people drive food trucks in? I could not, I don't know how, have, have you done, where people drive food trucks into a building?
We've built, I don't know if it's dozen, hundreds, but dozens of restaurants, all over the place.
Yes.
Um, so yes, I'm familiar with the CFM requirements. We've talked to our engineers about it, and how to vent it. So...
I don't think that's reality, just so you know. I, 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 it's a great idea, I, I just don't see that happening where you...
I take your challenge.
Yeah. We also have the windows, you know, I think, I think we fell in love with the look of the buildings.
Wait.
I was yelling at Patrick for taking the skin off, and they just, just should have torn it down the way it was, but that would have been a shame.
I do have the night picture in here.
Good, because I was looking, I was looking for it on my phone, I was looking for it on my phone.
I found four of them.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to be rude, but I was looking, because the night picture is really cool.
Yeah.
And, usually, we're at, when we're at this decision point on a project, we have a, we know who the tenant is. Okay, now we know you're the developer, and you're half the tenant. And, and we also have something that's presentable to the plan commission as far as what it's going to look like. I underst, when, when do we anticipate having what the National Park Service is going to sign off on in the future?
We have that, we have that.
So it's clear glass?
The windows stylistically will be exactly the same. The difference is, is that this will be insulated, double-pane glass, but stylistically, it's going to be the same.
You're going to have the multiple blue hues, and...
That is to be determined, that we're still arguing about, um, and we have ideas about that. So...
And you're going to have windows everywhere there are windows today?
Yeah.
Including that south-facing one on the second floor? See, that one would be a challenge to me for air conditioning.
It, the whole building's a challenge, that's why we said if we can't replace them, we can't do it. We have to have insulated glass. And we have to have solar shades.
So you're going to have a shade on that glass?
For the, during the summer, absolutely.
Yeah, summertime, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. Otherwise, it'll just bake.
Yeah, and those shades are on the outside, or the inside?
Inside.
Inside?
So at Green Exchange, the building on the expressway, we have twenty-by-ten windows across the entire expanse, right? And we have solar shades, and they're on computerized motors.
Yeah, temperatures, time of day, or...
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, in the evenings, when you want to see the cool light, oh, they're up, right? But three in the afternoon, before the event, and it's baking, yeah, we want to control the, the solar gain.
You know, I have a lot of faith in your, in what you do, I guess you have faith in your tenant, you know, it's, it's not where we started on this.
Yeah, not where we started, for sure.
Yeah, not where anybody started on. I think if we can just wrangle around the parking issue, you know, I, I, I think, we, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, you know, but, you know, we'd be really cool to have you here, you know. I, the, the capacity thing, uh, I know you're going to, you're going to be fishing in the same pond as Deco for customers, I understand that. But, uh, and what's the gauge's capacity, do you know?
Three hundred.
Three hundred?
Same thing with the Hampton.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll get another hotel soon.
Maybe just have one open.
Yeah, we just have that, yeah, blocks, a couple of blocks away, yeah.
If you look at, uh, at Green Exchange, as an example, um, and our partners' other venues...
So you say Grand Exchange in Milwaukee?
No, 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 uh, Green, Green Exchange.
Green Exchange.
That's the one, yeah, the Kennedy and diversity. You will see that we are number-one or number-two ranked wedding venue in the city of Chicago. Period.
And who operates that?
Uh, we have a partner in that operating business, and we are fifty-fifty partners.
But you're a partner in that business too?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And... Sammy Garver, yeah.
Sammy Garver.
Garver's top-ranked, we're a partner, operating partner.
Partner with them. Um, and so, we're happy to compete, uh, and we think that it, it's a rising tide. It just, it just brings more stuff to the, to the overall community, um, because there's opportunities there.
Uh, if I may continue, Mr. President?
Sure.
A single liquor license, just a simple combination B, not a, not a Class A for selling off-premise?
Yeah.
Okay, because caterers would typically use that.
Yeah, we haven't even dived into that discussion.
Well, I'm, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting close to the decision point here, and, you know, we've had some other stuff just kind of get slid around, and the project was still rolling along, and, you know, I just want to make sure it's like, well, they, when they, when they get four liquor licenses, or, you know. And I think originally we were talking about something like that, because there were going to be multiple locations in there, so... But if it's just really one operator...
Yeah.
That's actually better.
Yeah, in that sense, exactly. I think that's all I have, right now.
I was part of the group that visited Garver, and I was very impressed with the miracle that you people did to that building.
Thank you.
There was very little that you mentioned about the second-floor aspect, and I was glad you clarified that it won't be as Garver.
No.
The entrepreneurs wouldn't, aren't going to be in those spaces, it doesn't sound like.
Correct.
It sounds like you will be, uh, having offices, am I understanding that correctly?
An office for the tenant that will be operating the events.
Right.
Yes.
And I'm glad you also mentioned the reason why you made the decision that you did. Because I didn't know why you were having offices in that upper level versus having entrepreneurs leasing part of those spaces.
Yeah. I mean, all of the office spaces on the second floor of Garver are entrepreneurs.
Right.
And they all offer a variety of services.
Right.
And we, we like the way that it works. We have a waiting list there. We have two tenants right now that want to, want to get in the building that we can't accommodate.
It sounds like you have problems.
But, logistically, yeah, so, there's a, there's a wellness spa, they want quiet and serene. We have a wet space, and then we have Ian's Pizza, they want to make noise, and, you know, we get it, and they get it too. But it, it, it creates challenges, and so, we want to eliminate those logistical issues here. And on top of it, it's, it's a more expensive build, to build out all those individual spaces. And, we are just getting the numbers to work as it is, um, so there's, there's that as well.
But I just...
Oh, sorry, thank you. I have a chance to go.
Just want to ask a question, you mentioned it too, the logistics. You were talking about there were going to be some nonprofits, as well as your, uh, your tenant. How are we going to handle that, because...
Nonprofits that would use the event space. There would just be one tenant and two forms, but we're talking about all of the various things that can happen inside the building.
Like if we held our community gala?
Right.
Or the, the Humane Society holds their big fundraiser, black tie dinner. It's all those nonprofits that Alzheimer's Association...
But it'd be a solo event.
But they're bringing lots of people to West Side.
Right.
Well, I mean, at Garver, there's some nonprofits that do repetitive events, you know, like, like the markets or whatever, but yeah.
No, I was just wondering, because the, the tenant we have, more likely the first say, and, and I just want to make sure that we can really plan things correctly and not have a problem where, all of a sudden, they, no, you can't do it.
Yeah. The, the nonprofit organizations tend to have their weekday events during the weekdays, which works better for their clientele. The private events tend to do the Friday, Saturday, so it actually extends the use of the space. Um, it just sort of works for everyone's benefit, and get a, give them a better deal, because it's during the weekday, less demand, so, that's generally how it works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for the developers?
Mr. President?
One more.
Alderman Turner brought up farmers, uh, nonprofit, farmers' market. We operate, I mean, our staff operates our farmers' market. Who operates the winter farmers' market in Milwaukee County?
The Dane County Farmers Market.
No, in Milwaukee County, does anybody know?
There is a group, I don't remember the, but I know you, the first, one of the first things you wanted to do was meet with our farmers' market.
Yeah, we've already met with your team, and I mean, we, we're not, we're going to recreate the wheel here, you guys have a great thing going, um, let's just build off of that. So if there's a capacity for what exists to grow, it's a year-round, let's, you know, we...
Well, but, the reality is, the winter farmers' markets really aren't farmers' markets, they're more like craft fairs, or, or makers' mark, makers' mark, you know.
Yeah, it's a mix, right, you get bakery, you get cheese, you get meat, you know, those are all in the food category. And then, yes, you get some other marketing-type things, but, um, it's all small businesses, you know, and all from the region, so... Uh, but they are tremendously excited, the farmers, um, and the producers I've talked to, about having a long-term, big venue that can work, yeah. And we're a lot smaller at Garver than this space, and logistically, much more difficult than this space. So, we can do something much bigger here, and we're drawing fifteen-hundred to two-thousand people every weekend. Well, I, started, did it start in October, November? Uh, January.
January?
Yeah.
If I may, on the slide with the attendance at your, you had average attendance at a wedding, a hundred-and-fifty?
Hundred-and-seventy-five.
Yeah. That, that's at Garver?
Uh, that's in general.
Okay, well, you're not going to do weddings for hundreds, maybe high people here.
Well, they will.
You will?
We're being conservative.
Okay, well, then you are competing with a lot of other people. You're competing with every event space in the city.
So what?
I would personally think that that's, uh, a bonus to the area, if you're looking for venues, um, as you say, that two years booked out. Okay, I want to get married next year, we need to have options.
The age was booked out for two years.
Absolutely, so, I truly believe that this is probably something that's going to be a real, you know, gem to the community.
Well, of course, and plus the parking, I went to a big wedding once, and I had to walk quite a ways to get to a parking.
Right.
And the way you're looking at parking here, just a few feet away, so it's really good.
Well, I'll be honest, people today are accustomed to walking a distance.
That's true.
I mean, if you're walking two or three blocks, that's normal today. I mean, I, we were at an event yesterday in May View, and we had to walk three blocks, so what? No, it's not a big deal.
Most times park at...
People are accustomed to it. I'll be honest with you, it beats going downtown to Discovery Center and paying twenty dollars to park now.
You, you envision a, I mean, a valet setup maybe, making arrangements, pick and save? I mean, we had a, we had a previous event space that was looking to come to the downtown. They ended up not being able to purchase the building. But they had reached out to a property owner and a bank that had, it's a bank, they had empty parking lot. And they had already, even before they had, well, they ended up not buying the building, but even before opening, they were, they were looking to find a way to deal with their parking. With, with using a valet service, you know, and those kids have to run five blocks sometimes, and I don't get that. But, um, do you do valet at any of these, you know?
We do. We do, this wasn't, our, our vision is, there's a parking lot contiguous. And, when it's cold, and people are dressed in fancy shoes? That's what you want to do. So that's, the vision is, is we're contiguous.
Yeah.
It's very simple.
And the west side is going to be just a service entrance? The west door?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the north side, there will be an entrance as well, too.
Will be a pedestrian entrance on the north side? So like, like where the, you say limos come, or whatever, or they're all going to, most, most of people are going to come in that east side at that door?
Yep, it's the main entrance.
And do we have even like a plan view of how much public the patio might be, what that's going to look like?
We haven't, we haven't done the finish, the finishes of the patio, but yes, we have a, a...
A sense of that?
It's dimensioned out, yes.
Have we seen that now?
Uh, I mean, we've seen the layout, which has the, the patio, I think I showed last time a few minutes ago. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
I think he's got a layout.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, it's National Avenue, I touched the screen.
There we go.
National Avenue, Mitchell, yeah.
So the patio's going to be that space, that, that stretches to the south?
This rectangle, to the east.
The loading dock, the loading dock is the boundary on the south. That enclosed loading dock on the south, yeah, there's a wall there, and...
So you've got, you've, you've got three sides, and then we'll, you know, we'll do some sort of plantings to create that fourth wall, and then you've got parking.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
So it's like a garden, back of the building?
On the east side.
Oh.
This is the front, right, in terms of your, the facade?
Yes.
But, we're going to treat everything, your arriving, the parking is here, and your sense of arrival is this way, is coming in from the, from the back, right? And so, we'll have this, this patio here. So when you come in, that's what you see, that's your sense of arrival. Um, again, the train that came through, and there's, there's, it's really grand in terms of the entrance, your sense of entry is magnificent.
And we're still going to be talking about the parking?
Yeah, closed session. That hasn't been resolved, yeah. Um, and if I may also, during the day, where are the employees that work at the office coming in? Is that going to be the main entrance, or a south side there, or...
They'll have both.
Okay.
There, there's going to be, there's an entrance here, that goes into their warehouse space, and there's an entrance here.
You keeping the loading dock?
Oh, absolutely.
And entrance on the...
We're going to, we're going to change the loading dock, though, we're going to keep it.
So, semis?
We're going to, we're going to take that out, we're going to take out, refill it, yeah.
Okay, you're going to fill it.
Because we don't need semis.
You don't need semis. And, as long as you're here, you can answer these questions. The fleet of, the fleet of service vehicles for the, for the tenant?
Yeah.
Are they, they're, they're box trucks?
Yes.
And they're so like, about the size of say, a UPS truck or something, or like a...
Size of a box truck.
A box truck, I mean, like, you all, you all, you all went to... But they're, they're single, they're, they're, there's no semis? There's no trailers?
No.
I mean, not even like a trailer that they, yeah, because they don't rent, it's easy, because we, I, I didn't know until today that they don't rent tents, they don't rent tents?
No.
Okay, so...
And, and we can arrange for them to, you know, come in.
Answer these questions?
Yeah, they just don't want to be public about it if, until we know that it's a deal.
Yep, understood.
Mr. President?
I do, I do want...
I want to say my last word, you know?
Oh!
Hey, Benz, make sure it's not too late.
Really? Based on what I've been seeing for many years, that corner has been really, uh, far from Second World War structures, you know? So, so to me, uh, at this point, there really is an aspiration, I think, for the, for the area, and for this portion of the city, I wish to tell us, really, on, on the east end. To me, I mean, what you guys have been talking about it, to me, it seems that's a, more of a promise proposal, which I think will be, uh, successful for the city, really. I mean, I don't care about the parking, or whatever it takes, but I'm sure everything is going to work out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Patrick? I know parking has come up a couple of times, but I think it's fair to talk about, a little about that in an open session. So, if you look at the picture here, this blue area, that's identified, that's sixty-seven Star-Sar West Mitchell, the CDA owns that parcel. As part of the development agreement, we said we would build a parking lot in this area. It goes, maybe a hundred-thirty, maybe more parking stalls, it hasn't been designed yet. The CDA has given staff the authority to go and proceed to get a design, but it's really subject to all discussions, scope here this evening. You can see the image that was kind of sketched out, and kind of laying out, uh, a parking concept, I think that was probably done by a previous developer. But it is in line with et cetera. We do have somewhat of competing interest in this area. We have an event space that needs parking, it's a, it's an employer that needs parking. We also have a very successful brewery that, um, has found that that area is really convenient for their customers to park. Now, there still has to be continued negotiations on how to blend this, but, um, what was represented, um, from the developers, that they would like exclusive rights to that parking, that parking field. Mainly because you, you ha, in order to have a wedding, you need to have parking, you also have an employer that needs truck parking for those service vehicles. We also have a goal, then when we did the development agreement, is that there would be shared parking. Not just like a mall, or an area, we want a neighborhood feel. I go to a wedding, I might walk over before the wedding, have a beer. We don't want that person's, um, car towed, or, you know, people, it's going to be that. People go to bars before a wedding, and then they go to the wedding. It's, we all have, you can raise your hand in this room if you haven't, you know, done that, but...
Sometimes they go after.
Or after. All right, maybe people go straight to the weddings, maybe they go get something to eat, and they walk over to Makers Market, or, or Maker, or Farmers Market area, and then they walk back. I mean, it's like, Alderman Lys, it's, the idea is to create this walking neighborhood, people are going to pull out and park. So, that continued parking discussion has to continue between us and, and, and Old Brewery, et cetera. We're at a, a unique position where we have very limited parking.
And even with Makers Row?
And Makers Row, I mean, we, not this...
Farmers Market people would...
But as the, the other blue slide points out, there is a lot of street parking, and we talk often about how fast traffic is moving down National Avenue. often about how fast traffic is moving down National Avenue. Where if you put street parking there, it's going to slow down traffic in that area. It's a natural buffer. The idea that you could walk two blocks, you could park at the senior center and walk over. That's two blocks away. It sits Saturday night doing nothing.
Pick and Save has a ton of parking.
That, you know, that's where maybe the private parties will, or, or bomb, contact that and say, hey, I'd like to lease that back area of parking, if we need, you know, additional parking in this area. It might evolve to that in time. I don't, I don't know. But it, it's, the idea here is to create this destination. This is operating like a civic center in this area, and it's in a full, be full of activity, and it's going to spread out into this area. Maybe we get other reciprocal development in this area. But we want that, that walkable neighborhood feel. And you may park by the Farmer's Market and walk down. That's, I mean, I think we're accustomed to that today. And we don't have a parking structure nearby, but I, I don't know if that